I'd like to call us back into order here for Tuesday, April 21st in our regular meeting. And we're now to Public Works in our agenda. Item 14A, which is Order 15-14-21-10, in the matter of setting a public hearing for the proposed surrender of a portion of West Sixth Avenue, County Road Number 870 to the City of Junction City. And we have Mr. Baume.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here this afternoon in the matter of setting a public hearing for the proposed surrender of a portion of--
Okay. Kind of pull the mic down. Yeah, there you go. They're directional. They're loud, but they're directional.
I'm here this afternoon in the matter of setting a public hearing for the proposed surrender of a portion of West Sixth Avenue to the City of Junction City. Junction City has requested surrender of a portion of West Sixth Avenue located within an annex portion of the city limits of Junction City. As required by ORS 373.270, it is required that a date for a public hearing be set to allow testimony to be entered into the public record. Our office would like to propose a date of June 2nd, 2015, at 1:30 PM for the public hearing. This date would give our office sufficient time to provide proper notification and postings in the manner and timeframes required by law. At this time, I'd like to turn this matter over to the Board for continued discussion.
Any questions of staff on this?
Commissioner Stewart. No more questions, so if I just move approval of the order, that'll set it for June 2nd at 1:30?
Yes.
Okay, so I move approval of Order 15-14-21-10.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And looks like we get to keep you up there. Resolution in Order 15-14-21-11, in the matter of setting a public hearing for the proposed vacation of a portion of Irving Road, County Road Number 2254. Mr. Baume.
Yes, we'd like to set a date for a public hearing for the proposed vacation of a portion of right-of-way along Irving Road, located between Prairie Road and the Northwest Expressway. This vacation is by resolution, meaning that it is being initiated by Lane County. ORS Chapter 368.346 requires all vacations by resolutions to hold a public hearing to allow testimony to be entered into the public record. The Roads Advisory Committee heard this matter on March 25th, 2015, and favorably recommended moving ahead with setting a public hearing for consideration of this vacation. Our office would like to propose a date of June 2nd, 2015, at 1:30 PM for the public hearing. This date would give our office sufficient time to provide proper notification and postings in the manner and timeframes required by law. And that's all I have.
Any questions for staff? If not, do I have a motion? Commissioner Stewart.
I'd like to move approval of Resolution in Order 15-14-21-11.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Baume.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That moves us to Item C, which is Order 15-14-21-12, in the matter of electing whether or not to hear an appeal of a hearings official's decision denying a request for a planning director review for a home occupation for an events center venue for weddings, retirements, anniversaries, graduations, banquets, family reunions, meetings, dinners, and gatherings within the impacted forest land zone pursuant to Lane Code Criteria, Chapter 16.211-3N. And we have Deana Wright and Mr. Clark here for this one, I believe.
So just to clarify, the title is a little incorrect. It states that it's "elect to hear an appeal of a hearings official decision denying a request for a planning director's review." It should read, "Appeal of a hearings official decision denying a request for home occupation special use permit." And that's just to clarify that order.
We'll make that correction when we get to the order stage, whatever that order happens to be.
Change the order. The planning director did deny the decision, and the hearings official upheld the director's denial. So for some background on the item, the subject property is identified as tax lot 101 of Assessors Map 180506, subsection 40. The approximate 40-acre subject property is located east of the city of Anita and north of Fleck Road at address 25519 Fleck Road. The property is developed with one dwelling, septic system, well, two agricultural buildings, one of which is named the Pavilion, a gazebo, a 30-by-30-foot structure, and a 25-by-25-foot structure called the Pond House. The property is zoned impacted forest lands F2 zone. There are some aerial photos, and the applicant's site plan is in the attachments 6 and 7 of staff's memo. The application is a special use permit home occupation and was submitted to the planning department on June 13th, 2014. The home occupation is a request of an events venue for weddings, events, retirements, anniversaries, graduations, banquets, family reunions, meetings, dinners, and gatherings. The applicant proposes two categories for events: main events and floating events. Based on the proposal, in any given week, there is a maximum of four events up to 250 people. Not all events will include music or loud crowds, as indicated by the applicant. The home occupation will be operated by Andrew Head, the resident of the property. Although there are several buildings on the subject property, only the Pavilion and Pond House will be utilized for the home occupation. The Pavilion was permitted as an agricultural building under Permit 509 PA13-05645, and is approximately 360 feet northeast of the dwelling. The application was deemed complete on July 8th, 2014, and referral notices were mailed to adjacent property owners and agencies on July 15th, 2014. The owner held three events on the property during the month of August 2014. A complaint was received, and a land use compliance case was initiated on August 13th, 2014, in the Land Management Division. On October 31st, 2014, the planning director issued a denial of the request, and the applicant appealed the decision. On January 8th, the hearings official held an evidentiary hearing. The hearings official issued his decision on March 2nd, 2015, affirming the planning director's decision denying the application. Two appeals of the hearings official decision were submitted. One appeal is from Kim O'Day, representing the applicant owner. Andrew Head was submitted. And the other appeal from Sean Malone, representing Land Watch, Lane County, and others was submitted. The hearings official chose not to reconsider his decision, and staff mailed a notice of an elect to hear or not to hear the appeal with the Board, which brings us to this meeting today. On deciding whether or not to hear the appeal, the decision criteria is directed by Lane Code, Chapter 14.600, Subsection 3. There are four separate criteria, and staff found that it met two of them. These are explained on pages 9 through 13 of the staff memo. The issues we believe that are criteria-related centered around noise and traffic impacts and the conversion of agricultural buildings to other uses. Staff believes the issues on noise and traffic are of county-wide significance because home occupation, wedding event, venue requests over several different zoning classifications in the county, and noise and traffic are typically two of the top serious concerns in the neighborhood. Additionally, as addressed in the memo, analysis shows home occupations for wedding events is a trending and recurrent land use application request in Land Management Division. As to converting an agricultural building to another use, the applicant proposes to convert one of his existing agricultural buildings to the proposed main building for the event venue. The applicant's representative from Land Watch believes Lane County does not allow the conversion of agricultural buildings to be converted to another use, but they did not give a citation. Lane County has historically allowed the conversion of agricultural buildings to other uses. The code does not prevent the conversion, so it is not an uncommon request. Since Lane County allows for the conversion of ag buildings, this issue will recur with frequency. So the relevant elect-to-hear criteria of Lane Code 14.600 is subsection 3A, the issue is of county-wide significance, and B, the issue will recur with frequency. Therefore, the planning director did recommend the Board hear the appeal. However, the Board is not compelled to hear the case just because the standard is met. If you agree with the hearings official analysis, you can choose to expressly adopt the hearings official decision on your own, which is option 2, or you can simply approve the hearings official decision and let Luba decide whether the hearings official's interpretation is correct, which is option 3. If it's the Board's choice for option 2 or 3, staff can return with a revised order. In relation to the context of the appeal items, the appellant applicant owner believes that the hearings official erred on issues dealing with noise and traffic as detailed in my staff memo. The appellant representing Land Watch and others believes the decision should be denied as related to the 17 issues they raised in their appeal. The way to think about the appeal arguments is how they impact the Board's decision on whether or not to hear the appeal as they relate to the decision criteria and not the approval criteria. As to the noise issue, the applicant appellant argues that because his proposal meets Lane Code, Chapter 5.615 noise standards, then by that definition, his proposal cannot unreasonably interfere with the uses of nearby lands. The hearings official concluded that just because you meet Lane Code 5.615 does not mean that you can't reasonably interfere with the criteria for this home occupation proposal. The hearings official believes that the applicant's noise study was partly flawed because it did not measure the ambient noise impact to the neighborhood before the event and during the event. The appellant asserts the H.O. adopted this interpretation that is not consistent with an interpretation already made by the Board in 2002. As to the traffic issue, the hearings official concluded that a 25% increase of up to four times a week is an unreasonable interference with the reasonable expectation of the local area residents. The applicant-appellant disagreed. In conclusion, the applicant-appellant requests the Board hear their appeal. However, the appellant for Land Watch and others requests the Board not hear the appeal and deem the hearings official the final county decision. The decision is at the Board's discretion. This concludes my staff report at this time. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Any discussion about the issue before us or other questions? Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So looking at the history, it looks like to me a permit was not actually granted in the first place. Is that correct? That they basically, it looks like here that he started operation sometime in August, but was he doing this without an actual permit in hand?
Correct. There was no land use permit for the three events that he held in August 2014.
So it looks like to me that what happened is that it looked like that the application itself looked fine. So did he make the assumption, just because the application looked fine, that he could go ahead and start operating, assuming there would be a permit coming his way or a permit in hand? I'm not sure. Obviously, he or his representatives aren't here today, but I'd be curious on, I mean, usually when we've, my family used to build houses, I don't know, we had the permit in hand, and then--
So if I could interject for a minute--
Yeah, if you could. I'd appreciate this, because I'm kind of confused here.
But what we're here for is the decision of elect to hear or not to, and I don't want to discuss the merits--
Okay, and that's fine.
--of the actual decision until we are either hearing the appeal as the Board--
Okay.
But, you know, I just want to be careful that we don't start deliberating or do that where the applicant and the opponents are not present to rebut or anything like that.
Okay.
So kind of--
That's fine.
As we discuss this, if you can limit your discussion relative to the decision to hear or not--
Okay.
--at this time, that's what's before the Board.
Well, we'll do. I mean, and that's fine. I was just trying to get my arms around this to try to figure out why the denial occurred in the first place, and then the hearings official-- Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay.
So you've answered what I wanted to know, so I'm fine.
So before we move on to some of the other Commissioners, I do want to make note for the record that I have been contacted by both the applicant's representatives and folks that support the applicant, and I've also been contacted by opponents and neighbors of the facility. And I have turned down requests to meet with them repeatedly, knowing this may come before the Board, so that there wouldn't be any ex parte contact when we get to a quasi-judicial proceeding if we choose to hear. So I just want to make people aware that I have been contacted by both sides of this, because it is in my district, and I was aware that there was a controversy out there. But I have been trying to refrain from allowing people to contact me externally of the proceedings So the question before us is, you know, do we want to hear this or not? And I personally kind of agree with the planning director's recommendation that we do hear it, partly because I believe it is of county-wide significance, and it will come up repeatedly. In some of those contacts, people were throwing out other wedding venues to my attention and asking why they weren't having the same issues. And it turns out that one of the venues that was brought up is operating without a permit and is probably going to be contacted by Land Management and facing the same process that this particular issue is. And I'm sure at that time, we are going to hear all the same issues around noise and traffic and conversion of agricultural structures to another use, in this case, a horse arena. So, and then, of course, there was another site that was brought up that actually went through what was on resource land, for start. It was on rural residential, and they went through all the permitting process to stay legal and is operating legally under a permit. So these rural wedding venue sites are going continually to come up. It's not the first one that's come before the Board. We also had the one down near Crestwell that came before the Board. The issue of how they impact neighbors, and this is no different than when we started this morning's discussion with the Large Events Task Force, is an interesting policy decision for the Board. And I think one that requires guidance from the Board possibly on into the future. So I do think there is a, that it meets two of those criteria relative to needing to elect to hear, but I'll wait to hear from the rest of the Board, see if there's agreement with that. Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have to agree, and after reviewing this, that, you know, the two items that I think needs direction, as the planning director pointed out, noise and traffic, which is something that comes up all the time, at least in the rural areas. And then the other piece, too, is that conversion of an ag building to other uses, and that seems to be something that is pretty prominent, takes place pretty regularly. You know, if we're not supposed to allow conversions, then I think we need to understand that, because folks are, they'll take their ag building and turn it into a shop or other items that seem legitimate for uses that are permitted, and why build a new structure when you can convert one? So I think I'm leaning towards the fact that we probably ought to hear this one.
Mr. Farr.
Thank you, Commissioner Lozovich. You know, I'm trying to put things into context, into a uniform context, and I'm not disagreeing with hearing this, by the way. I'm in favor of that. But, Mr. Clark, there are weddings occurring all over the county. Why this one? Why are we, I mean, why are we looking at this venue? Is this a complaint-driven process? Let me state also, I heard from Mr. Cole this morning that the taxation and assessment department doesn't get out and inspect properties for tax purposes, and I would suspect that this may come under the purview of taxation and assessment also.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm going to leave that to Mr. Cole as to whether or not a farm referral under the tax code may be affected by events such as this. Hasn't come up, of course, in this case. I think this matter may have begun with a complaint for operating without, I think, any permit for home occupation, and I assume that's what triggered the initial application in this case.
So if it seems to be a non-uniform application of standards, rules, laws, et cetera, land use, is it because of, is complaint-driven? Is that how things come to our attention, is through complaint? Or do we have another mechanism to determine? Do you have somebody going out and saying, "Oh, it looks like a wedding over there. Maybe we should check this one out"?
So in this particular circumstance, they submitted their special use permit application with us in June, on June 13th, and then in August, they held three events. So they did submit the application, and then they had the events, and then the complaint was submitted, and then we initiated a compliance case. So that's the sequence on this particular one.
So this was triggered by them wanting to be in compliance and trying to be in compliance, and just things got out of order timing-wise, it would seem, perhaps?
Perhaps.
In theory, yes.
Okay, all right. And now that I'm not, I'm not rendering a decision on that by any means at this point in time. So then that does come back to my other question. If they had not initiated the permit, if they were just having the weddings--
Then it would make a matter of--
--we don't have the wedding police.
Yeah. Funding for that patrol was cut off a while ago, I believe.
I thought it was.
Yeah, so then it's just a complaint-driven.
It is complaint-driven, okay. Much like the fact that I had my tent trailer on my street for two days, and the guy down the street gets to keep his, and I don't get to keep mine.
Okay, good. Understood. Thank you.
If I can clarify a little bit, in this particular case, it's an event venue running as a commercial enterprise in resource-owned land. And yes, weddings occur all over the county and rural areas, but if you choose to hold your daughter's wedding at your own house in rural areas, one thing, you're not converting your property to a commercial use.
I presume that would be the case.
Yeah, and that's really where these issues come up, and we are having people convert resource properties to a commercial use or even rural residential properties to a commercial use for events. And whether they're adequately located and prevent, you know, too much impact to neighbors, I think is, there's some standards and policy decisions that the Board may need to take in those cases. But that's really, you know, we're not going after mom and dad holding daughter's wedding at home.
And that wasn't the nature of my question. Really, it was, you know, are there people out there saying, "Well, I'll do it for 85 bucks," but just don't tell anybody we did it? You know? I mean, people do quasi-commercial.
Yeah. And it's, you know, the one-offs are going to be difficult to police, but when somebody sets up a website and starts taking bookings for months in advance, and it's going to be a repetitive thing over the whole summer for neighbors to bear, that's where you would get into the whole issue of needing some kind of permitting process, you know, to ensure health and safety, and also, you know, whether it's compatible with the neighbors.
So the short answer to my question is yes. Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep. So it's an interesting issue, and it'll be interesting to discuss, because I'm particularly interested in how some of the wineries, which are located in resource lands, are able to hold events without going much beyond getting a tasting room. So that'll be an interesting discussion of the juxtaposition. I understand there's some state law about wineries that kind of exempts them, and it'd be interesting to hear that, because I know that there are neighbors of some of the wineries that have issues with some of the events being held. So any other discussion to the issue of elect to hear or not to hear? Seeing none, is there somebody that wishes to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, before Commissioner Stewart starts, just to remind you of the order the motion will probably pertain to, and that is to set a hearing on the 5th of May, I believe?
Two weeks, within two weeks.
Within two weeks is the requirement, right? So it'll be the 5th of May, which is Tuesday. The parties will be the county through its Land Management Division, the applicant here, as well as one of the appellant's Land Watch. And then just so, as you all know, it would be appropriate at that hearing to do any ex-party communication acknowledgements.
Yeah, which I've been trying madly to avoid. So I'm just looking at future agenda, and it looks like we do have one hearing already, annexing of territory into the Lane Borough, but there's no others, so it seems appropriate to--
Put it for May 5th?
Okay. To-- So if I just move the order, will that--
Andy, do we need to note the Scrivener's Correction in the order as we make the motion?
We will amend the order to make the correction that Ms. Wright read earlier.
So if you want to move the amended order?
So I'll move Order 15-14-21-12, electing to hear the appeal, setting the hearing for May 5th at 1:30.
Second.
We'll second.
Yeah, I'll give the tie to Commissioner Farr.
All right. That's good. With a caveat that there's nothing to do with the Battle of Pueblo, though. It's a bit of my own.
Yeah. Yes. Any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Sorenson.
I know that Oregon land use law says that the state will make the requirements on cities and counties to make plans, make zoning for their county or city, and then it leaves to the city or county how they're going to do that, and lets them define how to do that. But then, when there's disputes over it, there's opportunities for people to make a complaint, have a contested case-type hearing, and it's hearing on the record, what the facts are. And this creates for county commissioners and for city councilors the opportunity to both make law but also to interpret rules and interpret law. And I always think it's best if we spend our time making the rules, regardless of the outcome of this case, whether one side wins and the other side loses, or, and maintains the current status of the case, or the Board changes it and reverses the winner, it still won't really change any of the rules of the county. This provide guidance thing is done via the mechanism of ordinances and Board orders dealing with changing the ordinances of the county, not a case-by-case basis. Now, it's true that somebody might interpret that later, but the main issue is whether we're going to really change the code or not. The code's already set. This is a question of interpreting the code. So I feel like the best approach isn't to make rules for our community based upon the specific facts of one case. It's rather to open up the matter in a legislative-type format, where we take testimony from the public on what they want the rules to be and what we think the rules should be, and then we change our code. Many times, we spend a lot more time on the contested case than we do actually changing the rule, and then, what do you know? There's another contested case, we haven't changed the rules, and we spend all this time on these cases when, in fact, what we should be doing is define the rules more carefully so that there are fewer disputes over what the code really means. So that, those comments are by way of saying, I don't think that the best way to make the rules is on a case-by-case basis. The best way is to say, no, the hearings official, you know, did their, made their decision, and if people want to appeal that, they can. We're not cutting off their appeal rights, but we're basically saying it's an efficiency argument that we should be spending our time on changing the code, if we want to change the code, if we want to change policy, if we want to change our policy. Because obviously, county staff is interpreting county's policy. That's what the hearings official is doing, and that's what any appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals would do, is just look at the rules and apply those rules as they understand them. So I really think we're in a better position to make the rules, not be the judges of the rules. And I think that we'd be better off maintaining our role in the legislative context. rules, and I think that we'd be better off maintaining our role in the legislative context.
Thank you. Further discussion? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. I don't have the legal background that Commissioner Sorenson has, but it seems to me that whatever rules we make, at some point, there's going to be some interpretation as to, that we don't cover every single eventuality in every single rule. So, I think about, we're not judges, you know, so we don't make judiciary decisions that are used by lawyers down the road. However, I would guess at any time we interpret a rule, that land use attorneys would be inclined to look at our interpretation of a rule in the past and apply it to whatever action has been requested for the future.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Commissioner Chair. Some years ago, before I was a commissioner, I was involved. My father was in a land use application, and one of the things that I always felt that was important to me is that once a rule gets enacted, that it's enacted the same on everybody. And the instance turned that the hearings official decided to go away from past practice of about twenty years and make a decision in the opposite direction. And so, in this instance right here, I believe that there's two areas that were pointed out, that staff has allowed conversions of ag buildings to other items, and that seems to be past practice, and in this, really, that's a different decision. And also, back in 2012, there was a decision by the, or 2002, there was a decision by the board on, I think specifically noise, but it might have been traffic, that is, was a different direction than what was given in this hearings official's decision. So, you know, I do think that we do set the rules, but I also feel it's important that we make sure that the rules are applied the same way and as they were intended, and if at some point, we don't want those rules applied that way, then this board needs to make a decision to change it, not necessarily a hearings official do it or somebody who makes a better case for a different decision. So, I'd just like to be consistent to make sure that folks know when they come in and make an application, they know what the rules are. We're the best to apply them fairly with everybody's and honestly.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, since SB 100 was first adopted, I find it interesting, because I think our state, our county, and our communities have changed dramatically. And I also find it interesting that no other state decided to follow Oregon's so-called lead on that one. Anyway, so I actually think this is a good idea for us to take a look at this. And part of it is, I'm kind of curious on some of the, what brought up by the, that was brought up by the hearings official for one, but also, I think it's a whole broad context of our county. I mean, we're changing, we're changing constantly, and, you know, SB 100 was first, I think, adopted in 1973. If I had a business and did not change over since 1973, I'd have been out of business forty years ago, but we're close to it. So, I just think it's always good for us maybe to take a look at this, and so I appreciate staff actually recommending that we hear this. I think that'll be key as we move forward, because I don't believe this will be the last time we hear something very similar to this. And then we, wasn't that something similar that happened in Crestwell? And now we're, now this one. So, I think this is going to be an ongoing issue. People are looking to make a living here in Lane County, and they're looking for entrepreneurial ideas, and so I think it's, I think this will make a lot of sense for us to hear, and let's see where we go from here. So, I appreciate, I appreciate the recommendation, appreciate the comments from the board. Thanks.
So, I, I think in this case, you know, that normally, you know, the role of the board is to actually set the regulations and the laws in our code, and we normally don't sit in interpretation all the time, but, you know, we specifically have under the code the ability to hear these things for reason, and those reasons are described in our election to hear, and we found two of the four criteria meet in this case, and in particular, just the conversion of ag structures to other uses. I think we need to put the board also on record as to whether or not that's something that's allowed in Lane County. That has huge countywide significance. If it's, if we don't feel that there should be any ever conversion of an ag structure to another use, then we do seriously have some code to be rewritten. But if we support the idea that can be converted, that's a whole different thing, and, you know, ultimately, the appellate or the applicant can move this on to Luba anyway, once we've reached our decision here, and there's further appeal process even beyond that. So, we're not the final arbitrators of this. We could be, you know, if the sides all end up agreeing after whatever decision we come to, but I do think that there is precedence for us to hear this as the board, so I'll be voting in support of the motion. Any other discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, and this is just an order, so it doesn't need to be a roll call. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Sorenson in opposition.
But clarity, could you read the motion out loud? Pardon me for the-
It's okay.
Moved to approve the attached order electing to hear the appeal on the record and scheduled an on-the-record hearing with the Board of Commissioners within fourteen days.
Thank you. Which is May 5th? Yeah, Margaritas?
Me need them.
I need them afterwards.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that concludes the regular business. Thank you. Is it Deanna or?
Deanna Wright.
Deanna. Sorry, I think I said Dina at first, so I apologize. Thank you, Deanna and Andy. That brings us to review of assignments. Mr. Mokhaiske.
Mr. Chair, we, in addition to your comments on the Large Events Task Force, the direction that you gave us, of course, for the interviews for the Lane County Sheriff tomorrow, as well as the number of motions that you took that I'm not going to repeat related to our legislative agenda, the two specific assignments that I heard were from Commissioner Lichen, where we had head nods for discussion with, between our legal counsel, both county counsel, district attorney, and I think also our Health and Human Services staff, to look at the policies and procedure and process for these commitment hearings that are happening at the state level and what, who has what level of legal jurisdiction in those. So, we will take that one, and what I heard is not a desire for a work session, but let's try and get some answers and understanding around that. We'll work with legal counsel and staff to provide the board an update on that. And then the second review, request was from Commissioner Bozovic. Can you hear me okay? And I saw head nods for a work session to review fire response preparedness. I heard specifically for West Lane County, but I'm thinking that you're meaning for, really, for all of Lane County.
It's going to be intended for the entire Lane County, but they want to start in West Lane County, my understanding, because there's fewer parcels to deal with, be easier for them to get it up and done, hope to have it finished in the first year, I believe, and then do Eastern Lane the second piece. And just for a little bit of additional clarity, just the way I understood it when I was represented when I went to the East Lane meeting was that, you know, a piece of property starts out with hypothetically, a piece of resource land, it's F2, it's one big chunk and it's under, and it's being assessed for fire protection, and ODF gets resources for that. And then what happens is, is that that piece of property may get broke up into multiple chunks of land, and what's been happening is, is that the assessment hasn't been following those changes in the land sizes and ownership. Therefore, they're not collecting what they believe is the, possibly what they believe is the appropriate amount of money for lands that they have to protect. There's folks that aren't, that aren't receiving assessments that should be, and so the idea is to put together, it's, I guess, my understanding, similar to Senate Bill 360, or it gives them the authority under 360, to put together this group of people to review these different assessments and make recommendations to the assessor to make changes on the tax rules. So, intent is just to try to get resource land that they're charged with protecting, making sure that those folks are paying their assessments.
Any other assignments that were missed? Thank you, Mr. Mokhaiske, and we already dealt with having an executive session this morning. Is there any other business for the board today? If not, we will adjourn and reconvene tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. in the Board of Commissioners' conference room for our meeting to appoint a new sheriff. So, we are adjourned.